Please do.
Yeah, I'll deal with that.
Right.
Missing Bryce. Missing Mike.
Tucker doesn't have a mic.
Are you?
That's one of the.
I don't know how you get to be in two.
Yeah. Have an airplane.
Like to call the order. The City of Columbia Plant Commission meeting August ninth, twenty twenty-two. Start with invitation by the end and all staff.
Lord, we thank you for the privilege to live in your presence and to work with you to build a better community. Help us to do right, to deal fairly with all of our citizens, and give us the faith and courage to put our trust in you. In your name we pray, amen.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States.
Dan, if you call the roll, please.
Scott?
Here.
Bryce?
Here.
Ted?
Here.
Tucker?
Here.
Rick?
Yeah.
Mark?
Here.
You all received a copy of the minutes of the July twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to them? If not, they'll stand as presented. There is no old business, so we'll move right into new business. First item on new business is a site plan review. Heather Kohler, twelve North Main Street. Uh, like to open a home decor and gift shop. Is Heather here? You step up to the mic, please.
Hi. Hi.
Kind of give us an input of what you want to do and.
Um, it's going to be more of a pop-up type store. Um, I'm still trying to figure out hours, but I. We finished furniture, vintage home decor. Similar to what other shops do, but a little different. I have a lot of dried flowers and I specialize in old mirrors, old vintage. Paintings, things like that.
Okay.
I'm also using the space in the back, the back room for a workplace.
Okay.
To work on projects.
Any questions from the board here?
There's this, if you're first entering. Doing retail business, what's up?
I have a spot in Patty's Main Street shop. I'm on the porch in there. And I was also in, um, Park Avenue Marketplace and in a slot in Boardman that I rented from someone else, a small space.
Your next move up to.
Yeah, my first.
Thank you.
Single location.
What was recently in this location? I don't really know what the last.
Signed with an insurance company, but I know Alexis from Leatherden Restored had moved into that blown out of wall between what is now the skate shop and that location. To use that for classes.
Okay, so it's kind of right there, up there by the, um, log cabin.
Yeah, it's right across.
Right across.
Okay. Skate shop and the eye doctor. The eye doctor still live?
Yes.
I'll motion approve as submitted.
I'll second that one.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Dan, if you would, call the roll, please.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Good luck.
Good luck to you. Thank you very much. Next, uh, three items are zone changes. Couple of them been here before. We, uh. Just over that we had to dot some i's and cross some t's. So we're making it right. And, uh. Doing them again, so we get things done in the right order. So the first one is a zone change. Uh, Mike Knoll, one forty-one East Park Avenue, like to change from I two to C four. Seven point nine six acres. But Mike, if you want to come up, I mean, we've heard it before, but many of these people behind you have it, so.
Yep, uh, the plan is to start a small farmer's market there, uh, and sign with a small producer, honey, veg, beef, eating equipment, stuff like that, pollinator. Equipment. As long as I'm starting with and see how it goes next.
So I guess what we need to do is, uh, make a motion.
That is correct.
Okay, we need a motion to approve this zone change.
I assume move.
Have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Right, this is a recommendation to go to council.
Yeah, council.
Yes, this isn't a public hearing, go ahead. Right, but.
I just want to know, yeah, I'm all for the farmer's market.
Okay.
But say a year from now, he goes out of there and Mr. doesn't do it anymore. Do you need to hold on who's coming in there?
They would have to come to planning commission.
Okay, so that's what I'm worried about, what's happening after the department plant. I'm all for the department plant.
That particular piece of property is, is. Very limited to what can happen on. Uh, Mike knows it, I think Rob knows it. Didn't you try and do something down there at one point?
Now, you, you, yeah. Daddy knows it.
I think converting it from an industrial to a commercial is for the benefit of the community and the neighborhoods down there, because right now the way it sits, you could literally put an asphalt plant there. Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the C four.
That's a C four.
But it, it.
Right now, it's industrial, it's I four, and you, they could put literally an asphalt plant in there. It's an industrial zone. And you have no say on that. So the best thing we can do is actually restrict it from an industrial to more of a commercial setting. So this is part of that step process, which is will be better for the neighborhood and all. If you look what their requirements are in industrial setting, I mean, you can. So you can.
Wide open.
You can put a lot of things there that, that don't fit. So that we're, we're in the right step, trust me.
We're moving the right way.
Yeah, there were a lot of things that couldn't be done based on the use that could be made of that. But you've already heard about the unique features of that property, which Mike is well aware of. As it turns out, there's a lot of things, there's more things that won't fit than would fit. Zoning in commercial allows somebody like Mike to be able to use it if he wants to try to deal with the unique features of that property.
There, there's a sewer line going out through the center or something, so you can't build.
Yeah, there's an easement right down the middle. And, and Mike saw it and made great improvements on the property. You seen.
And.
Okay.
And, and we met in our last meeting, too. We wanted to make that so it better fits the characteristics of that neighborhood. So whether it's our planning commission or future planning commissions down the road, I'm sure that they will act with that same intent as we have on this property.
You're welcome. So we have a motion in a second. Dan, if you would.
Bryce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay. Good to go. Again, Mike. Next item is a zone change. Kevin Price and Total Generation Services, nine four seven East Park Avenue. Would like to change an R one and an R two to a R two P U D. Hello, again.
I think everyone knows the details at that point. Any questions?
I, I don't think we have any question. From, from everything that's been presented and we're in pretty good shape. I know there was concerns about runoff. I think you've had a engineer look at that, and we will have our city engineer look at that.
Just like putting together a good stormwater plan from that, which it needs, that area needs that.
Yes, you're right.
And I, from what I understand, I think the city's working on some additional stormwater coming out of cemetery.
Yeah.
So if we work together, it'd be real nice for everybody.
Okay. Well, we have, do we have a motion on this? We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. This also has to go to council.
Yeah, this goes to council. Council will set a public hearing. Notifications will go out to all the adjoining property, property owners again, as well as publication.
Ed, you got a concern?
I do.
Okay.
Ed Susani. Have the property across the street from there, and I was just sitting there marveling at your letter. Said meeting, uh. Person's interest could be heard. But then above it, in the second paragraph, it says, uh, planning commission will recommend the city council to rezone. Sounds like it's a dumb deal to me anyhow. Then the first opening paragraph. Will consider. Rezone request. Am I wasting my breath?
I don't think so, because it has to go to council, and we'll, we'll present it to council.
Notice has to go out to you and every adjoining property owner before planning commission can consider it. Whether they want to recommend it or not. It then has to go to council. The council can't make any decision without having a public hearing, so.
I understand all that, Mark.
It all goes to council.
I dealt with you in the past.
You have.
I'm attorney. And as you also know, I know a little bit about things, too.
I do.
I don't mind expensive way, you're on very cheap way. Because does that not say that I just recited?
I did not send the letter, so I'd have to take a look at it. It may have said that. But if it said that planning commission will recommend, um, probably should not have said that, although this matter has been before planning commission. The reason it came back to this stage was to make sure that proper notifications went out to adjoining property owners before planning commission even considers. And that was my fault. To do that.
Well, I'll say the same thing. I, I was invited to a meeting.
You were.
Prior to this, and I, I would say the same thing. I said, yeah, I've seen that land across there covered with water. Prior service director, Don Schaefer. Insisted when we built the sewer out there, the lift station, that we raised it off grade, because he said he'd seen it flowing across fourteen, not fourteen, East Park. I know East Park has been raised with several coats of asphalt. Probably seven, eight inches higher than, uh. It was when that sewer was built. The water is one concern, and any other, and I suggested the same thing, and I'll say again. If the city or the state would add a turning lane where you brought on fourteen, it would help the traffic flow there, because adding more people. Sometimes that's a real challenge. To get off the East Park on the fourteen, a turning lane would help quite a bit. Then it would be very inexpensive, relatively speaking.
Yeah, I believe that's a state issue over a city issue, but I'm not a hundred percent sure about that.
Yeah.
The city has a stormwater ordinance, and I believe it's based on a hundred year. So I mean, they, what, doing this should actually help resolve some of the water problem, and as properties get built with proper stormwater. You solve those problems, so it should help, actually rather than hurt the, it should help it. Okay, um, and as city has, in the, in the past, city hasn't had a whole lot of stormwater ordinance, so the water just sheet flowed wherever. And as we build each new facility with proper stormwater control, it actually makes the problem go away or become less, because now you're not feeding the system. The, the way it's designed is if you're sheet flowing like something was never built there, and you're controlling it on the property and discharging at a rate. Based on your, your rainfall intensity and your, your amount of storm that you have. So city has pretty strong, a pretty, pretty, um. Like, periphobotage only has a ten-year storm recurrence. City of Columbia, I think, has a hundred-year storm or recurrence. So the city of Columbia actually follows, and they base it off of city of Board, Boardman, which Boardman has very strong stormwater requirements.
I'm not a hundred years old, but I've seen that flutter over here completely flooded several times. And Nick, from Nick Stinchoff, if he was still alive. Very apply that because it's flooded.
How do you storm occur more than once?
Prevention stuff. Sometimes doesn't work very good, where you put the new soccer fields in, all that's doing is flooding a bunch of water down on, uh, East Park.
I think stormwater work good if it's proper design.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, it does need some proper stormwater management. Looks like you're doing that. We had golf course there since nineteen eighty-five. Never had to close it for more than a fair or something from a heavy rain. Those, that rainy water did come from the cemetery area, it would work its way down through it, which is gotten better because of, uh, Owen's Works project, they've started to slow it down, but. But we still definitely need some designing stormwater management, not just great flow of water.
You, you have, uh, according to your site plan, you have locations set up for them, and as long as House and Bear, whoever does your form of design, follows the city ordinance. I mean, I, I think it's gonna actually take water offline rather than adding it more to the, to inland.
I noticed one of the things Kevin's doing, too, he's calling it the lakes that was thrown by, so he's building large, large retention in pond areas, which I thought. Pretty big, significant for that size of projects, and that's, he definitely working towards that. Is there gonna be fill brought in now? I'm not the developer on it, but, uh. I really don't know, you have to ask, yeah, it'll be here a couple of years, probably a period. Maybe we'll be hit there.
Fill is brought in, that's my thing. Places for water used to be. Not if you dig the lower spots and use that for fill.
But the lakes are gonna create a lot of fills.
Normally, they try to balance sites, I mean, it doesn't make trucking, trucking fields very expensive. And normally they'll balance sites with more, as much stormwater as they can.
Like I said, uh. Kevin, Chris is a developer on the project, so that'd be the question for me.
It is a concern and, and I'm sure we'll watch it. Did, did we have a motion in a second on this? Okay, and we voted, did we vote? Okay.
No, we did not vote.
Alright. Thanks, Deanne, keep me, keep me straight. So, there's your word, please.
Ted?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Okay, we're on the move.
Thank you.
Next item is DRB Properties, four, four, one, three, nine to four, four, one, five, one, State Route fourteen. Would like a zone change from I two to C four, seven point three, six, seven acres. How do, Mark?
Hey, how are you?
Good. So, Mark, you wanna do a zone change out there at, uh, the old track stall?
For the, uh, approximately three hundred to fifty feet block. When I. About the time I annexed and changed to, uh, I two, which is a long time ago. We put in, um. We opened up the creek. And, uh, we had a hundred year flood study done. We put in a culvert squash pipe across there, where it happens to be. That squash pipe is about three hundred and fifty feet off of Route fourteen. And that seems to be a reasonable frontage. For the C four of us still leaving that for I two.
Thank you.
Now, what preempted this is that I've got somebody that's wanting to bring in and drive through the coffee shop. Going to the, uh, forty-four, one, five, one address property, but of course it won't fit I two.
Doesn't fit I two, you're right.
So, we sort of talked it over with Lance a little bit and sort of said, well, maybe if we just switched, got the frontage. All the way across somewhat I own the C four and they better fit, it already fits the other things that are theirs.
What's on both sides of that property?
The far east, far west side, forty-four, one, three, nine, is that, is that tours.
But what's that zone right now?
Right now, it's I two.
Okay, and what's on the other side, I two again? That's all I two.
Yeah, big car repair shop, I think.
But it, it is contiguous to God about tours, what you see for C four.
Okay, so God about.
You've got C four beside it, this was industrial. Um, so it's not as if you're creating, you're not creating an island, that's not, you know, the, the typical problems you'd see would. Spots on there.
And you do have an ax, a dedicated access road to the back?
Pardon?
There is a dedicated access road to the industrial?
There is a dedicated access road, it's been planned by Howson Bear.
Yeah, there is actually plans, the city plans for developing the rest of that foundation there, but it's kind of tabled, right? So, there is planning and.
Right now, there was some discussion about the state coming in. Originally, we planned the road opposite the entrance to the industrial part, so it's. Then the state come along and started talking, they didn't want it there now, which is why we put it there in the first place. But right now, that's where it's placed, Howson Bear has done a complete land use study on the fifty-five acres out there. And we have the road planned for the whole, whole property.
There really wouldn't be a downside.
No, there's no, I don't see a downside to it, other than we're, we're gaining a piece, it's gonna make it usable property.
Right, I think.
Mark, Mark's been to talk with Lance on several different occasions about people interested and, you know.
And every time he does, it's.
It doesn't fit.
It's a commercial, yeah.
We're trying to make that, that corridor somewhat more commercial than what the stuff behind it being.
Yeah, put the industrial behind it.
That's kind of like industrial park, we're trying to.
And we have the access, it's sort of, it's not officially that off, but it is as far as on our draw.
Yeah, and, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, so it makes, actually, it makes more sense than what's zoning right now. And as Mark has continued to come up with ten, and prospective tenants that are commercial, it's like, eh, no.
Yeah.
No, no, I think he started hearing the word. And I think that's when the discussions with Lance were the idea of, okay, let's rezone the frontage to commercial and make it usable.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, recommend that we change that. That location from I two to C four.
Okay. I have a motion in a second, and that is also to go in front of council, is, is the motion is to go in front of council. Okay, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Deanne, if you would, please.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Okay, Mark, we're in a moving right direction.
Okay, good deal.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Next average item is a replat, total generation services. I'd like to replat eleven forty-five East Park Avenue.
Yeah, he's back.
So, just a quick overview of that is, um, I sold that yellow house eleven forty-five to Mark Kenny. And just giving him a few more feet width, a little tight for his driveway and all that. Doesn't approach on anything else, the closest structure is about forty-five feet to the property line. Still on my, still on my property. Wanted to plant some trees.
That's it? So, you're on point one nine five acres or something, point one one nine five?
It's a small strip, it's a point, it's a small amount, maybe what, some, some B wires.
You had like a wedge there.
Yeah, it's just gonna square some off. What looked to be the natural dividing spot, he's telephoned, pulled the direct air on the property, the new property line. There was a house next to that one time, some of you probably remember better, I think it was a close, it's eleven fifty-five address, there's a building, building over there. Close to the power lines.
Is that where that yellow garage sits back in?
It's got a black roof on it now, well, there's like a yellow shed on the power lines, and there's also a little garage in the back a little bit. Pretty sure someone said it was a horse farm there a long time back in the day.
So, that garage is on the property line or road?
Forty-five feet to the east of the new property line. I think, yeah.
Yeah.
This one right here is the structure, it stays on my property, and it's still forty-five feet east of the new property line. So, basically, we just added a small strip down the east side of his, his property. Which was about a year ago, I think, I brought that one here and it's that off of the thirty-one acres.
Okay.
I could have had a little wire at the time, it was.
As long as it doesn't set back.
That's what I'm saying, is I, 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 and that's a caveat, but I'll be saying from now on is I'll, I'll motion to approve as long as current structures do not violate setbacks.
Yeah, I, I agree, so you're making that motion, okay.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Deanne, if you would.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Thank you, alright, thank you. Yeah, next item, site plan review, Wendy's Restaurant, parcel number fifty-four dash one twenty dash twenty-one. Uh, just east of Best Western on State Route fourteen, County Line Road. Hi there.
Hello.
How are you? So, I guess we kind of know what you want to build.
Pretty, uh, cut and dry.
Yeah. Okay.
Could you give us your name?
Yeah, my name is Andrew Rich, and I work at Stokely Gold, and we're the developers that the, uh, Wendy's restaurant, I do that, I collect that, bring it to the project too.
So, obviously, you've gone through our planning and zoning book. Okay. You know, kind of know what's expected and when, and.
Yes, sir, yeah, we, we, uh, we've built the city down on at least one occasion. Such as that, that it was a much project, it would be something favorable project, uh, at this point, we. We can go over to make sure our site plans are compliant. Believe that it is, uh, we've tracked, uh, we, uh, we're starting to get into, uh, engineering now, it's, it's, um, in terms of. Favorable to us, we started our engineering, we've got the engineering plans before, since that.
So, the traffic study, let's talk about that, you got that one that had been approved by ODOT, or what traffic study have you done?
It's through city.
City?
Uh, so, so it'd be, uh, the, the third party.
Okay.
Under the study.
Okay, so we're good on the traffic study then? Uh, whether, the next question is, because there's not a whole lot of land, it's pretty low, um, stormwater, what are you guys planning to handle stormwater on this project?
Well, I get the, the first thing that we contend on building certain property up to upgrade, it's more underlying surrounding problem.
Okay.
Um, and there's storm structure, uh, I believe, in.
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Garpes, I'm from Free Men's Tears, uh, someone's getting private management, pretending, uh, still in the state.
Yes.
Uh, so as Mr. Richard mentioned, we'll be raising the site up, uh, there are, there's an existing headwall, two patchways on the property. Um, as we raise the site up, we'll be installing an underground storage facility to control runoff and meeting apartments.
Okay.
Just wanted to hear. Any other questions?
What are you looking at time wise?
Well, um, I guess, I mean, it's, 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 turns out favorable for us, then we'll start an engineering, we'll probably do technical training. Get some facilities, generate an engineering plan, I don't know quite what, uh, the term or, um, time is, to do the third point consultant. Um, my hope is that we'll have all the things approved by the end of the year. Um, I doubt we start construction in December, but we most likely be, um, at some point in spring, it's kind of start.
One of the neighbors asked me out there when he could get a hamburger.
Hopefully by the end of next summer.
Okay.
What is our, I'm just out of curiosity, what is our traffic requirements as far as, yeah, I just know that it gets pretty congested out there. And do we have kind of set parameters, I really haven't.
Yeah, we, we had to do a traffic study, uh, ODOT, that's a limited access right through there.
Okay.
And we did spend it during the years, and, uh, look good.
Okay.
We would like to, uh, do a commentary, maybe, and then we can mention one down, um, fourteen, we'd like to do a couple over the next five years. You know, down through there, we'd like to maybe eventually extend that, uh, part lane down past all of our store, but that's not. That's not these plans, but, um. You know, what they did in the past, uh. Because in order to come here, they wanted to make sure that they were connected to the.
Right.
So, uh, so they did some, you know, some of their homework up, up front.
Oh, yeah, what about connecting the backside property, is there anything we've ever?
No, so, the, the property in the back, there's a gazebo in the back, and that is owned by Best Western.
Okay.
Uh, probably two hundred foot property between that and another house.
But can, I don't know, as far as even connecting the back of the Dutch house, is that, that's what I'm asking.
Uh, explored that, talked about it, and they've not rolled that out.
Okay, and I don't know if it says, planning commissioner, so you really have a whole lot of say on that, I just didn't know if that's something we're trying to push for some back connection, because it starts to.
Like a west, a west exit?
No, just as far as the back of the property, connect to the other.
Like if you were connected to that.
Right.
That service road that goes into, uh, the Dutch cover.
Dutch cover, yeah.
Just a thought, I mean, uh, I, I, my, my question is, uh, I, I don't know if we have a, a light intrusion problem with the residential behind you or not.
We'll have, have a link, um, probably on the site, and that link, you know, just, um, code. And the prepared, you know, work with code as well as any kind of, states of residential.
Okay.
There's only a couple homes that would even affect, and I, one of those homes chose to take all those trees down by their choice, not by anybody else. I do not know why they.
They weren't thinking ahead.
No, they weren't.
Alright, do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we submit.
Have a motion?
Prove, prove as submitted.
I'll second. I have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Deanne, if you would, please.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay, we can't wait for burgers. Uh, the next item is a site plan review. Wade Bowley, seven hundred, Columbia Waterford Road, Columbia Schools. I'd like to put a tower up, Education and Emergency Communications Center. Brought reinforcements, Wade.
I did.
Okay.
We have an amateur, I used to play bowling. And we have an amateur radio club, uh, at Columbia School, Columbia High School. And I need to some of my students to buy their gear because I want them to be involved in the development process.
Okay, very good.
Everything, a learning opportunity.
Fantastic.
Um, what we would, uh, propose, and I think you have some limited, uh, site plans on that. Right where the, uh, amateur radio tower would go would be where the connector is, it's tucked back in the corner, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't see. Except maybe the last ten twenty feet of the tower, which I don't even know if it will raise above the, um, the dome on the high school on. Um, so, do you have any questions about that, uh, the, the towers itself would be installed. Uh, professionally by RAA data company. And we'll go with the recommendation, you know, though, follow the site plan to the power itself, it's only sixty feet, it's not eighty feet. So, we won't have that last section of the power up, last one to, uh, thirty-sixty feet. Um, self, self according and that.
And just so the planning commissioner knows, although you may be looking at chapter twelve ninety-eight. It has an exception for amateur radio towers, and that's exactly what this is, so it. Actually fits within the exception, so we don't need to be as concerned with. The zoning district that this is located in, it actually fits within an exception, so there honestly is no action that you need to take on this. And that was determined this afternoon about four thirty, just so you know.
Well, how far is it from the nearest school building, is it more?
It's going to almost be. If you look at the way the high school was connected to the existing middle school, which was two-story. It's connected clear, you know, this is the front of the building, but you might as well call it in a. In an area that you really can barely see from the road. When you're in the parking lot, in front of it, you might be able to see back there, but this is really. Way back.
So, it's more than sixty feet away.
Pardon?
It's more than sixty feet away from the structure.
Yeah.
Because that, that was one of the conversations we had one time, like, I think we talked about, uh, yeah, we don't know what time, but, but it was. Uh, telephone tower had to be at least the height, the distance away from a residential.
Twelve ninety-eight says three hundred feet, I, I studied twelve ninety-eight last night.
Yes.
Quite a while.
We did too, sorry, but, we then run it again, that's, uh.
The chief came out with a brain finder, put the rear antenna with that, and then the nearest residential was at the two hundred.
And, and, and this is a lattice type?
Yeah.
Structure?
Forty-seven, it's gonna be the lattice type, you know, the base is probably this line, then it goes up.
Three legs. Six legs. Some, something for somebody, could dare somebody to climb it?
I was gonna say that, our, our next, uh, also, we will be putting a gate and a fence around that. Or anti-climb plates welded to the bottom, at least ten feet up, so you'd have to have a wire to climb up the tower or.
Yeah, that's between you and the school, but.
And also, I just, we have to hear that Jackson, if you have any questions for him.
I, I can see it there, I bet you can't climb that.
What worries me with the Florida project is, um, probably invaded and lost.
Why don't one of the young people tell us why this is important to you?
So, I got my amateur radio license in fifth grade from the club we started. Uh, so far, it's amateur radio in general, the club included. Has improved my public speaking skills, math skills, science skills, English skills, geography skills, and just about anything else that you can think of.
Several relations skills?
I brought these parts, yes, one, each of these is meant for plenty. Um, on amateur radio, operators talk to each other, sometimes they exchange push cards essentially. It has the date of the conversation, uh, sometimes there'll be a note on the back. But these basically say this contact happened. So, these are some of them, uh, they're from all over the world, this one's from Ethiopia, Africa, so they come from all over. Uh, so that's improved my geography, um. Overall, I think it also improved social skills. A lot of my friends are in, interested in amateur radio, all have their licenses. And it also helps, I mean, now, there's so much texting and just, there's no face-to-face talking. While there's no face-to-face, you're thinking on repeat, you're not texting, most of the time, so it's very beneficial.
Do you have like a call name or a call, do you have, so?
So.
Okay.
Get licensed, uh, the Federal Communications Commission issues you a personal call sign, uh, mine is Kate, K L four. The club's K L, yes.
Yeah, the club's a K L, yes, we kind of pick it because it's, it's close.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So, everybody always has a, uh, personal call sign, and that's sometimes a club's.
We used to have truck radio, my, my, our company was W N and Q two four nine.
There you go.
I, I didn't remember that.
Seeing things, looking at the bigger picture, this would be used fully operational for any kind of natural disasters and kind of national emergencies. Uh, we can go into the, to the, when the power would go down, or when the, uh, cell phone towers get hit, or whatever. We'll be able to set up that station, and I'm confident that any one of these three, uh, young ladies here, they would have divided the communications. Or, I'm sorry, four. Especially these young ladies who do, by the words of communication, uh, and, and, you know. Something really gotta happen, we need to make that builder, uh, the school, and the communications office could be right there for us, let's step right in and.
Could, could the police use it?
Yes, uh, there, there, there will be, uh, enough real estate, so to speak, on the tower. The tower will house a human check repeater, which could bubble on, so they'll be able to talk on the repeater. Um, and it will also house a, uh, H F antenna, and, uh, there's a directional antenna on top of it. And then we plan on putting another stanchion out, and that would be open if the need ever arose for the city to jump on that tower for some.
Are there any other schools in the area that have one of these?
We are unique, uh, I think there are even one other school in Ohio that has. Redson Elementary, but we're probably one of only two schools in the entire state of Ohio that has a program.
Wow.
It's, it's feminine action.
I do raise the funds for this tower.
And we have community public.
Okay.
Paid us money to buy the antenna and go on top of the tower, and the tower would be donated by already.
Okay.
And the rest of the station would be bringing back.
And we're always working on collaborations.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I just think that was a wonderful presentation, uh, we can't take it, we don't need to take any action on it, but thanks for coming and informing us. We appreciate it.
Got educated a little.
I definitely got an education.
That we got an education.
Okay, that was our last item. Next item is, uh, permission comments, any comments from the commission?
I think that was tremendous, your presentation, and what you're trying to do, I think it's very exciting. And it's gonna be a nice addition to the school district and the city, and so thanks a lot for all your work.
Yeah, thank you. Any public comments? If not, uh, meeting is adjourned.